Welcome. We're at the Council Chambers, City of Marshalltown, at 10 West State Street. The date is January 25, 2021. Time is 5:30 PM. And let's do the notice to the public first, that the mayor and council welcome comment from the public during discussion of any of the agenda items. You're required to step to the mic, state your name and address for the record in a limited time to three minutes, so others may speak. All speakers shall speak clearly. Director comments to the mayor and council, and not to any consular specifically. It's at the discretion of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions and comments, or to have staff respond during the meeting. Now that we've been called to order, let's do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Goudy? Goudy?
Here.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Starks?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Very good. Full house tonight, which is nice. We were lacking one last week, and it's nice to have the full house. It's time now for the mayor, council, and administrator comments. Let me reserve those, so that we can first do two or three other things. And the first one is years of service. Chief Tupper? No?
Uh, me, Your Honor.
Oh, it's not you. I'm sorry.
Um, Damian Draper actually works in our wastewater treatment plant lab, and he was unable to be here tonight.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Ah, but now we're up for Chief Tupper about the canines. Oh, you didn't bring the dogs?
Mike Tupper, Marshalltown Police Department. And I'm gonna have Lieutenant Kyle Stevenson, I'm sorry, Sergeant Tom Watson, and retired Sergeant Linda Rup come up with me, please. So these are familiar faces for us. You've seen all three of these folks around. And Mel, when did you retire? 2018. So Mel's been retired since 2018, but she's still a reserve officer, and works in the 911 Center as well. And as you know, we recently retired our two police dogs. And their handlers are here tonight. Lieutenant Kyle Stevenson was Raji's handler, and Sergeant Tom Watson was Jordi's handler for many years. So, and actually Kyle, he has served our department and our community as a canine handler twice now. He's had two dogs since 2009. And then Sergeant Watson served our community with, as a canine handler, since 2014. So the Marshalltown Police Department has a long history of excellence when it comes to our police dog program. And it has nothing to do with the police chiefs that have worked for the City of Marshalltown, has everything to do with our handlers. They have been the leaders in this program. Sergeant Rup is well-known throughout the country as a canine handler and expert. And we've just been very fortunate to have some really rock star people leading this program. So I wanted to take the opportunity tonight for these folks to come into the meeting, so we could recognize them for their years of service. Serving as a canine officer, and I've never done it, but I've had the fortune to watch these folks over the last nine years. And what I've noticed is that serving as a canine handler requires a lot of things. It requires a lot of perseverance and patience. If anybody, these dogs are like world-class athletes, okay? So we all have dogs and cats at home that are not world-class athletes, and we know how difficult it is to control them sometimes. So they have to control these world-class athletes, and it takes a lot of perseverance and patience. A ton of hard work, a ton of hard work, a lot of time, dedication, a lot of courage. We ask them to do some really dangerous things, because they have these special skills and this tool. So I don't even know, countless hours of training, countless hours of caring for the animals. The dogs move in with them. They become part of the family. And it's like having another kid, I'm sure. And they have to put in a lot of effort. It takes a commitment to excellence. In order to be successful in this field of law enforcement, you have to have a lot of commitment. When you take on a special assignment, like being a canine handler, you have to be all in, and you have to be committed to excellence. And these folks certainly are. And then for me, I think the most important thing is leadership. And of course Kyle's a lieutenant, and Tom's a sergeant. They already have leadership responsibilities in our department. But in order to be successful as a canine handler, they have to have a lot of leadership ability. And certainly Tom and Kyle have demonstrated that time and time again. So before I close, I want to ask Sergeant Rup to come up. And I think she had a couple of things she wanted to say, and she had something she wanted to give the guys.
Thank you, Chief Tupper. It's a little tough for me to talk. I can't look at these guys. I've been living vicariously through them for a few years as a canine handler. It's in my blood. It's in my system. But I could not have had two more dedicated officers to fill my spot and do it as better, as well or better than I did. I'm honored that they took my spot and worked in the City of Marshalltown in the capacity as canine handlers, and will continue to be amazing officers, leaders for the Marshalltown Police Department. I wanted to present each of them with something that was very special to me when I retired my dogs, and it's a police service badge with the canine's name. It matches the badges that we have. So on behalf of the canine program in Marshalltown, from the Marshalltown Police Department, Sergeant Watson for Canine Jordi. Thank you. And Lieutenant Stevenson for Canine Raji. If I can get it open.
So I know anytime that my name is on the agenda to recognize people, everybody thinks, oh, my God, the chief's talking again. It's gonna take forever. But I really appreciate you all allowing us to come up here and recognize our employees. It means a lot to the employees. It means a lot to our department and the community. And I just want to say, on behalf of the Marshalltown Police Department and the City of Marshalltown, I cannot say thank you enough to these guys for the work that they've put in. Not just as canine handlers, but they've had a lot of other responsibilities in the police department. And they're both rock stars. They both do a great job for our department. And so in appreciation of your distinguished service, I have a couple plaques for you, and my eternal gratitude for everything that you've done. So thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, Chief.
I'll make it quick. I've been saying this a lot lately, kind of like a broken record, but I want to thank the members of the community, because if it wasn't for such a supportive community, our program wouldn't be where it is today. Along with Sergeant Rup, she's what made this canine program what it is. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'll echo what Sergeant Watson said. Without Melinda's leadership, connections, knowledge, none of this would be possible. And I look forward to, the nice thing about our program is well-established, and we're gonna continue on with that. So I look forward to kind of be involved with that as we go into the future, and select replacements for us, kind of like Melinda talked about. Watch our replacements kind of take over, and see how it goes from there. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Before I go out to the next thing on my personal agenda tonight, I'd like to mention the fact that what we know as, serving up here for 10 years for me, longer for others, is the number of awards that this program has gotten. And then the community support. It's like with the bicycle program, too. When we need something here in this town, the money comes out. And so if we, you know, whether it's an ambulance for the hospital, or a dog, or a bike, or equipment, the vest, that sort of thing, this community steps up. We find the money, and we get it to you, because we know what an important job you have, and what a good job you do with it. So, thanks very much.
Thanks, guys.
The next thing I'd like to do, well, let me ask if anybody else up here would like to speak, or the city administrator has anything to say tonight.
The one thing I will just mention, because I've had a few emails and text messages so far, is that please speak into the microphone, because there are people, quite a few people online tonight, and so we want to make sure that we have some clear audio.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas Nancy Stevenson started working at Marshalltown Area United Way as the office manager in 1978, was promoted to the assistant director in 1987, and then to executive director in 1994, where she has served in this role for 26 years. And whereas volunteerism, education, and health are the core of what Marshalltown Area United Way does to support our community, and whereas the Marshalltown Area United Way funds 27 local agencies in the Marshalltown area, whereas this is a credit to the community, volunteers, and Nancy's steadfast leadership, whereas the recent campaign met its goal of $780,000 during a year that included a pandemic and deratio, whereas through her leadership, she's enhanced the lives and vibrancy of our community, and whereas Nancy is retiring after working 43 years at the Marshalltown Area United Way, now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Joel Greer of the City of Marshalltown, do proclaim January 29, 2021, as Nancy Stevenson Day. Join us in thanking her for her years of dedicated service to Marshalltown and surrounding areas. We wish you the very best in retirement. Wherever I set my hand and cause my seal to be affixed, this 29th day of January 2020, Joel Greer. Thank you, Nancy. Okay, anybody up on the council dais like to speak? All right. Let's go on to the next agenda item. Well, and if you would, I'd call for motion to approve the consent agenda.
All motion.
With the removal of number 13.
Okay. If number 13 is off, Gabe, is it your motion then?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
And Gary, Raymond?
I'll second.
Raymond seconds, okay. Let's call the roll.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Starks?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Very good. That carried. And when able, please speed read them.
Approve minutes from the January 11, 2021 meeting, and bill is in the amount of $3,59,844.34. Appoint Jeff Sims to the Dangerous Building Board of Appeals. Approve liquor license renewals for Fairway, 102 West Anson Street, Jiffy Convenience Store, 111 South 3rd Avenue, Mama De Grado's Pizza, Pasta and Pizza at 2,500 South Center Street, Bonds Pub, 22 North 1st Avenue, Wandering Creek, 2436 233rd Street, Hampton Inn and Suites, 20 West Iowa Ave West, Food and Gas Mart, 613 North 3rd Avenue, Casey's General Store, 111 North 3rd Avenue, Plaza Mexico, 903 West Lincoln Way. Approve liquor license change of ownership for Casey's General Stores, Inc., with an update of officers and board of directors for all stores, including 916 East Main Street, 108 Iowa Ave West, 1402 South 12th Avenue, 111 North 3rd Avenue, 1009 West Lincoln Way. Resolution adopting the 2021 and 2022 Strategic Plan. Resolution to certify unpaid bills for collection with taxes. Resolution awarding the bid for asbestos abatement and demolition of three properties to Lansing Brothers Construction Co., Inc., at the cost of $65,350. Resolution approving the renewal of agreement by and between the City of Marshalltown, Iowa and the State of Iowa, Iowa Veterans Home relating to police protection at the Iowa Veterans Home, Marshalltown, Iowa, for three fiscal years, beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2024. Resolution to adopt deed restrictions on Track A and Track B of the South Ridge Estate subdivision in the town of Marshall, Marshall County, Iowa. Resolution to revise stormwater and storm sewer easements in South Ridge Estate subdivision, and accept a corrected quit claim. Resolution approving engineer's statement of completion and accepting of South 6th Street and West Merrill Hibbs Box Culvert Repair Project, being project number SMW 19002, with a final project cost in the amount of $59,906. Resolution supporting an application to the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for a backup generator for the Veterans Memorial Coliseum, and providing for a local match. Resolution approving a grant agreement with Natural Resources Conservation Service for the removal of debris from stream channels due to the August 10, 2020 deratio.
Very good. Thank you. Let's address number 13. Is there a motion to approve number 13?
So moved, Your Honor.
Any second?
No second, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, discussion.
If I...
Go ahead.
If I may, Your Honor?
You may.
Just one housekeeping item to start with. In paragraph 1, subsection C about the elevator, I do not believe we completed that in 2020. I think that's gonna be done this calendar year. Is that correct?
So we determined that the elevator did not need to be fully replaced at this point, and just had needed to have some ADA upgrades, which were made, so...
Oh, they were made?
Yep, they were. They were less costly in the neighborhood of, I think, $5,000. And so that technically has been completed. And so to amend it, then we'll remove it from the agreement, or state that that was completed, so that it's there for historical preference.
Okay. And then, the only other thing, Your Honor, I have a problem with paragraph 2, that we will do the snow removal for this company, this entity. I think there's a lot of businesses that would love to pay as little as $250 annually to have the city remove their snow. I don't think that's something we want to get into, is removing snow from entities outside of city government. So I will be, unless, if we don't strike that out of there, I will be voting no on this. Thank you, Your Honor.
Sure. Anyone else like to speak? I could open it to the public for 10 seconds.
All the lines are unmuted.
Okay. That's 10. Let's go ahead and call the roll. My watch is a little fast today, because we're getting 10 inches of snow.
Thompson?
No.
Warren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin? Starks?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Let's move on to item G, resolutions. Would you be the first one, when able?
Resolution approving purchase of software upgrades with Tyler Technologies Software for the Intergov Implementation Project.
Anyone wish to approve that? Move to approve?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Isom.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Starks. Any discussion?
Thank you. Michelle, I'm in, I'm here, I'm helping to meet up with the director. This is a proposal from Tyler Technologies. They have the Intergov software that we utilize for permitting and code enforcement, as was discussed during our strategic planning session, and during our lean process with our building and community development process review. We determined that there was a need to improve our software system to be more compatible and allow for interaction with the public through both application submission, and through nuisance enforcement and feedback. So in addition to that, our software is a necessary point of some upgrades, as they're changing over some of their platforms. So it was an ideal time to implement some of these new features, as well as doing the basic necessity upgrades that we needed to do to keep functional. So in all the proposed quote that you have before you is implementation cost of $56,398, and then an annual maintenance, essentially, agreement of $13,290 for a five-year period. We will have a small amount of technology, equipment needs as well, a couple of iPads, and I know I talked with, like, my code enforcement to be able to have a printer in the vehicle, similar to what PD might operate with. And so we may have a few other expenses that will be taken up into general minor computer budgets. So I'd ask for your approval of this to move forward. They did indicate it would probably take about nine months to fully implement all of the components, because they'll have to work a lot with staff as we go through the head up phases for these things. But we would get started probably within about a two-month window, as their schedule allows, and working with other communities.
Thanks, Michelle. Any questions or comments?
Your Honor?
Yes.
So, Michelle, for clarification, so the citizen self-service portion of it, that is gonna be an app, you said, or how is that, is it gonna still function as a website form?
The citizen self-service portal is, I don't know that it's necessarily an app, but it should be very user-friendly for people. You would create essentially an account, like you would with many other services that you might use. So you can log in and submit information, and then check up and see status alerts and things like that of what's happening, whether it's a permit, or a complaint that's maybe being received. So as I understand, it would have that ability and have that interaction alert-type system to you, probably direct to either a text or an email. But it would function through the software. I don't know for certain if they have like an app capability specifically to that or not. But I think it is very interactive with mobile devices and things like that. Should be responsive in that way.
Okay. And I guess the only other question I had is the contract maintenance amount, the $13,290. How does that compare to what we currently pay from annual maintenance of our contract with them?
Jessica, maybe you remember that right offhand. I want to say it was around six?
I don't recall.
I don't remember either. I apologize.
Is this the type of thing where, oh, okay?
Diana says she believes it's around $4,000.
Okay.
And I was wondering, if on an iPhone I have reported what I consider to be a dangerous or dilapidated building, or a nuisance, I can then check back a month or two later and see the progress on that? I'm not, could you hear my question, Michelle?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that question, Mayor.
Sure, okay. I wondered if, if this is in place, if I report a building that I think is either dangerous, or disrepair to the extent that it's a nuisance, and I do that on my iPhone, say three months later, if I want to check and see, has there been any progress on it? Has a complaint been filed? I'll be able to learn that.
Yeah, if I understand you correctly, I think you're asking if, like, if you file something, if you can check on the progress on it. And I believe, yes, you would be able to do that if you so choose to follow it on your item. So you should be able to check and see that a notice has been issued, or, you know, what kind of actions are pending, or where the review process is.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I know we discussed this in length at the strategic planning meetings. We talked about freeing up Joe's time. I think this is a step in the right direction, because one of the biggest complaints I get is people don't get feedback. And I think, I gotta believe that that's one of the modules that's gonna exist, that I think if this doesn't encompass everything, I think it's a great step to get more accomplished. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else? Well, let's open the mic for a quick 10 seconds. I guess unmute is the correct terminology.
The lines are unmuted.
Thank you. Okay, 10 seconds are up. If the clerk ever gets written comments on these things, just go ahead and volunteer that you did. I'll assume that you didn't, unless we hear from you. Let's go ahead and call the roll.
Starks?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Very good. Unanimous again. When able, please read the next resolution.
Resolution awarding the bids for removal of deratio-damaged trees and root balls in the parks to Integrity Services for $100,000.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Your Honor.
Any second?
I'll second, Your Honor.
Thank you. Discussion?
Jeff Hubbard, Parks Direct Director. As you know, after the storm, we had 800 and some, actually 1,200 and some, trees that had dangerous hanging branches in it, which we awarded a contract for the removal of that. During that time, we sent city staff out, along with some help with the DNR, and found 863 trees in the terraces or parks that needed to be, they'd either meet the category A FEMA of 2/3 of canopy is missing, trunk split halfway down the middle, or is leaning more than 30 degrees. So we came up with that list, divided into two groups, one for the terraces, one for the parks. And in the park side, we included the root balls as well, of some of the trees that were down. So on December 31, we put out a bid, and bids were opened up on January 25, or no, on January 18. And the low bidder for the parks and root balls was Integrity Services for $100,000. You can see all the rest of the bids in there. We have contacted them, and they feel comfortable with their price.
Thank you. Any questions of Jeff, or comments? I really don't anticipate, given the number of people participating remotely, don't anticipate any discussion about this one. Although, if anybody wishes to open the mic or unmute for 10 seconds, let me know. Okay, roll call.
Starks?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. When able, read the next one, please.
Resolution awarding the bids for removal of deratio-damaged trees on the terrace to Bennett Tree Services for $329,560.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you. Discussion?
So again, Jeff Hubbard, so this is for just the ones on the terrace trees, the 535 trees that are on terraces. And you can see from the bids, Bennett Tree was actually the second lowest bidder. Martin's Tree Service was a lower bidder, but they did not include a bid bond, and did not feel that they were a responsible bidder, and so we rejected their bid.
Thank you for the explanation. Any questions of Jeff, or comments?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Jeff, refresh us and the taxpayers that this does qualify for FEMA partial payment reimbursement, right? Correct. This one and the previous one. Correct. The last two ones, 85%, will get reimbursed from FEMA. Yeah, just wanted to make sure that people realize that, that we're gonna recoup some of this money. Correct. Thanks, Jeff. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. You bet. Very good. Any other questions or comments? Again, this isn't controversial enough to open the phone lines or mics, so let's take a vote.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Starks?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Next one, when able.
Resolution ordering construction of the Final Clarifier Rehab Project, WPC 2001, setting public hearing on proposed plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost. estimated cost, and directing publication of notice to bidders.
Any motion to approve?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Starks for the second, thanks. Discussion?
Good evening, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director for all except Councilor Stark. She may remember, we discussed this several months ago. Final clarifier number one and number two at our water pollution control plant have both suffered concrete floor damage. Both believed because of high water tables in their adjacent location to the Iowa River. As such, we had Fox Engineering prepare plans and specifications for repairs to both of those floors. A smooth, uncracked concrete floor allows the mechanical systems within both of those clarifiers to operate correctly. We do have an estimated cost at about one point two six million to repair both clarifier number one and number two. Clarifier number one has significant, has more significant damage than clarifier number two. And at this time, the cost of this project will be covered with cash available on hand from our sanitary sewer enterprise funds. Are there any questions I can answer? Or I believe we do have Bob Rantz in the Water Pollution Control Plant Superintendent or Fox Engineering on the go-to meeting.
Just a reminder, everybody really needs to have the microphone right next to their mouths. We're getting a lot of comments saying that people can't hear anything that's being said.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions or comments? Again, this isn't controversial and it's something we have to do to comply with the requirements, so let's take a vote.
Starks?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wern?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Very good. Carried, when able, read the next one.
Resolution accepting bid and authorizing the award of contract for the Fourth Street and Meadow Lane Storm Sewer Enhancement Project in the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, being project number SMW one seven zero zero one. And there is a correction in the title amount that Public Works Director Justin will clarify.
Yes, again, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. As the city clerk just read, our title does have an error in the low bid amount. Our supporting documentation, the resolution, the bid tabulation, the memo, and the notice of award all have the corrected amount. The corrected low bid amount is three million ninety thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. That was a bid received last Tuesday from Veeth Construction Corporation from Cedar Falls, Iowa. Our engineer's estimate of probable cost for this project was three point five four million, so we did realize a significant savings in the bid. We anticipate the construction will start in the springtime, presumably April or May, depending on spring rains. And this project is funded with borrowed funds from the 2020 borrowing. Are there any questions I can answer?
Hearing none, are there any comments?
Point of order?
Yes, sir.
Have we had a motion?
Oh, we didn't, do we?
I would motion for approval, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I'll second, Your Honor.
Boy, I'm asleep at the switch.
Sorry, I got the cart before the horse.
That's all right.
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Just, Justin, are, the people in this neighborhood finally going to be happy that all this tearing up of their whole neighborhood is going to be done this year?
I don't ever want to presume anything. I would like to think they would be happy with the upgrade in storm sewer capacity in that neighborhood. Whenever I get asked that question, I will point out that there will be a rain that will exceed the capacity of the storm sewer system. That always happens. So this does not guarantee that there will be no, no further flooding in this neighborhood. What it does mean is the storm sewer is now up to the capacity that is specified by the state of Iowa.
Thanks, Justin. Thanks, Your Honor.
You bet. Again, something we just have to do to comply. I don't think we have to unmute the mics for this one either. Let's go ahead and vote.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wern?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Starks?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, folks. On to the next item H, which is ordinances. Would you read the first one?
Ordinance one five zero zero seven ratifying and repealing prior ordinances related to Marshalltown Urban Revitalization Area Number One, third reading.
Entertain the motion.
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Amen.
Second by Martin, thank you. Discussion on this one? Maybe we really don't need any discussion since it's our third reading. We've kind of been over this a couple times.
If, if there are any questions about it, I'd be happy to answer them.
And again, I, I don't anticipate any public response, but yeah, let's just go ahead and vote.
Martin?
Yes.
Starks?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wern?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Very good, that one carried as well. Next ordinance.
Ordinance one five zero zero eight ratifying and repealing prior ordinances related to Marshalltown Urban Revitalization Area Number Two, third reading.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Thank you, gave Your Honor a roll. Is there a second?
Yes.
Starks for the second, thank you. Any discussion? I've had two people complain that I'm hard to hear and wonder if I could slip the mask down. Let me slip it up, see if that works. Is that in the battle? No, that is a little louder, isn't it? Okay. And now you'll all suffer. Again, I don't think we're going to be getting any comments in ten seconds, so let's go ahead and vote.
Starks?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wern?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Very good, that carried. On to the third ordinance, please.
Ordinance one five zero one zero adopting the 2020 National Electric Code, first reading.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Isom.
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. Discussion on this one? Let's vote.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wern?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Starks?
Yes.
Very good, that carried as well. Let's go on to the fourth and last ordinance. Is there a motion to approve? Well, I'll let you read it first.
Ordinance one five zero one one amending chapter seventy-seven parking schedules, schedule seven, snow removal, parking prohibited, first reading, and staff requests the waiving of second and third readings.
Is there a motion to approve it?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Second.
Mr. Isom. Discussion?
Good evening, Rick Legg, Street Superintendent. Our staff, and this is in front of Miller School on South Eleventh Street, basically from Church Street to Boone Street. When we pick up our snow, it's similar to the CBD, so we put that into the middle of the street. We've had some issues with residents that live there, parking on either side of the ridge of snow, therefore making it next to impossible for us to pick up the snow. So we're just asking if this section of street could be added to the no parking during snow removal operations.
Any questions or comments?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Rick, if we do waive the second and third readings, how fast can you get signs up? And are you planning on doing door inserts for the people that face that street that immediately, you know, once this gets published, this is going to change?
Right. The signs can be put up temporarily. It's hard with frost on the ground to obviously pound and post in, so we can put up temporary signage. And I was also considering just for education or whatever, to let everyone on that street know. Most of them are aware of it. It's, it's maybe, you know, one household that we've been having issues with using it for a personal parking lot, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five.
Right.
So, yeah, that's our plan, is to go with those addresses along that street that would be affected, just with the mailing and letting them know that, you know, this is going into effect if approved.
Thanks, Rick. And Jessica, this would go into effect after the publication of the paper, right? If we waive the second and third reading?
That's, that's correct. It's only effective upon publication.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, yeah. Any other questions or comments? I'm assuming right now if we voted positively, it would be to just pass the first reading because I didn't hear, unless, unless I missed it, that the motion included waiving the second and third reading. So if anybody wants to waive the second and third reading, I think that takes a new motion.
I'll motion to approve waiving the second and third reading.
Okay, so second to that motion.
Second.
Let's, well, it doesn't make sense to take two votes. Yeah, I guess it does. Let's, let's vote on the motion to waive first.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Starks?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wern?
Yes.
Gowdy? Gowdy?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Well, given that unanimous vote to waive the third reading, I think it doesn't even make sense to go back to the original motion. Let's consider that that passed. Unless anybody has an objection to do it that way.
Your Honor, I would like you to open up for comments, please.
Okay. Let's, yeah, let's go ahead and open up for comments. If we get a win, we could reconsider whether we go back to the original motion.
The lines are unmuted.
Okay. Very good. We consider that one passed. Let's go on to the discussion items. The first one was is about the infrastructure partnership with Rosemont Companies for Lynn Creek Housing Development. Who would like to speak first?
I will be speaking to this one, and we do have with us virtually Mike Hayworth and Tim, I don't know how to pronounce your last name, but Tim with ISG, who, we do have a presentation that I'm going to pull up and kind of let them go through here. But really, just to give you kind of the background of where we are at, is this has been a project whereby they have an option on a property that I would say is a very nice piece of property within our community and are looking to do residential development on that property and are looking at a public street. And so as we were talking with them about this project, we were looking at what we had done with Washington Street and Cading Properties, and the, the dollar amounts on this project are a little bit less. And so this is one where we thought it just made sense to talk about how we could go about paying for the public infrastructure involved here in kind of a very similar way. And so, Tim or Mike, I'm not sure who I'm going to pass it to, but one of you, go ahead and, and take over, and then you can just let me know when you want me to advance the slide.
Awesome. Good evening, and thank you for having us. Just kind of a quick background on this. Mike Hayworth, President of Rosemont Companies, real estate development firm, looking at, focusing on housing specifically in smaller communities around Iowa. And then Tim Rahim is, is a partner principal for ISG, and they are, they're more or less my consultant on engineering, architecture, everything associated with it. You can go to the next slide.
We're chuckling because Jessica has to run way up here to the dais to handle the phone and then run down, down below for the computer stuff. Got the next slide, though.
So, so ISG, a little background on them, they're a very reputable firm located all throughout the Midwest with offices in Des Moines and Waterloo and Storm Lake as well. If you guys have any specific questions on ISG as a firm, Tim can address that. But from our perspective, they're a great fit to bring on to our team, so you can go on to the next slide. So we started looking at Marshalltown a little while back, and we've been able to work with you guys now on South Ridge Housing, which we're very excited about moving forward with. Looking forward to getting construction started this spring. As we started looking around town, we came across this piece of property over on Sixth. We, we really felt like it was just a, an up and coming area with, with very good proximity to the golf course as well as other amenities. The trail connectivity connecting this development into the surrounding neighborhood and to downtown, the rest of the services around are very exciting and what, what is actually one of the items that drives us to be interested in this property. Overall, the art district is a, is a unique, kind of a hip atmosphere with, with different offerings that people wouldn't really expect. There's a lot of things that are unknown that I think need to be really voiced about Marshalltown and, and hopefully being a partner in this area, hopefully we can continue to work on that. Like we said, the, the amenities around here are exactly what you want for housing development. You want somewhere where you can work, live, and play, and this is really going to give that, that easy access to, to all the businesses around town. The downtown atmosphere along with wayward social being close by, and of course, the golf course being right next to it as well. There's, there's proof of proven, proven success in development with the Crosby Park Development. Seeing what has been done already in this area shows what, what potential it has and really entices us to see what was possible, so. Again, it's just centrally located and we were excited about the easy access to downtown. So when, when we started looking at this project, we, we started wondering what's, what's really going to be our big challenge, our big hiccup that we need to overcome. Marshalltown's a, a very unique community where it has close proximity to a lot of the major communities around it. Des Moines, Ames, the Cedar Valley, Iowa City, Cedar Rapids. It services a lot of areas where it can be easily accessed by a community family that may be going into different areas or working in Marshalltown as well. And so we're excited about what can possibly happen, but there's always going to be challenges. And so seeing this as kind of a, a known style of development for Marshalltown just brings its, its question of, is it going to be accepted? Will the market support what we want to build? Will the market support what we want to build? Looking at the overall price point of what these homes will sell for, it's a tough market to hit the appraised values in terms of the for-sale products. And so everything that we're proposing to build would be for sale. And with that, there comes a level of regulation from the banks that come from the feds. And so with that, we're just really kind of hit between a rock and a hard place in terms of what we can even ask for. Construction costs are continuing to go up. The natural disasters, COVID, everything has made materials more expensive. And so putting all that together, you start really pressing the upper limits of what the project can support in terms of construction value. And so when you start looking at your construction value, your soft costs, the overall appraised value starts to really become a concern. So that's where combining the construction, infrastructure, and knowing what our max market can actually be, it's going to be, it could be very difficult to get this to be successful. The overall marketability of Marsh Town is more or less what we're trying to prove. There's a huge community population that comes into Marsh Town every day, and they're looking to just absorb a small portion of that into work that they're doing around town, so. Overall, it shows us challenges, but there's also opportunities. So if we go to the next slide. As we said, the challenges are there, but what provides opportunities for successful development are the ability for us to get a higher density development on an infalocation. Being able to utilize existing infrastructure, existing utilities, provides minimal impacts on the city's overall maintenance budgets, but still allows for increased tax revenues that otherwise might not be able to be realized through that property. There's a potential stormwater partnership with the Leeson Golf Course. It's not necessary, but talking with the golf course, we could potentially be able to bring in a more of an aesthetic natural barrier between the golf course and the development, providing a pond that could be both as a challenge for the golf course, but an overall aesthetics improvement for the neighborhood that we're proposing, as well as the golf course. Again, touching on the bike trail, that provides great connectivity to the rest of the development, the rest of the city. Close proximity to downtown means that a bikeable community is easily to access. The down payment assistance is really kind of one of the last big opportunities that we see in the city, the chambers work, some of the private companies that are all participating in that. That's going to be a huge impact on what we can actually sell these homes for. And so if there ends up being a gap between the appraised values and what we can actually sell these for, this will be able to substantially provide enough of a down payment, enough of assistance for individuals who want to own a home, own their own property rather than rent. It will give them that opportunity. And so that's a major program that we're very impressed with. Seeing that from your community means that you guys are looking to the future. You guys are serious about growing the community, and so we're excited to be a part of that. And then lastly, discussing with the city, possible assistance for the infrastructure in terms of the street and sewer just makes this a more viable project to the point where it would be challenging to get everything to pencil out if the city were not willing to partner on this. So it's a great partnership that we hope we can maximize and really give something that's exciting and new for the rest of the community. Jessica, you go to the next page.
So we talked a little bit about the project. If you're not familiar, it's right next to Leeson Golf Course on Sixth Street. It's owned by the Mountains right now. Again, this slide just kind of shows the proximity to downtown, the easy access. This is the first concept. So right now, we're showing duplexes in, those are the units for the townhomes. Twenty-two.
Potentially, we could be looking at twenty-four townhomes. However, we're looking at analyzing the market as units sell to better address which direction we want to go in terms of duplexes versus townhomes.
A couple of things. Now, note on the concept. You can see we're showing an hour of wet ponds, kind of split between this property and the golf course. That's what Mike was talking about on the previous side. There's an opportunity to enhance the park through that area. Also, you know, it would be a high move to this development if it was overlooking the golf course. It's really hard to read on here, but there's a, there's some sort of mobile buffer between this development and the golf course. So, you know, native grasses that would, you know, deter people from meandering from this development into the golf course, which is a concern for the golf course. But we're also, we don't want to restrict views either, because we see the golf course as an enhancement to this development. The bike trail, that you can see, this is a key feature to the development. In fact, through the seminar, the passive center, going to look here, can be an active ride trial, and that trail can continue as a key feature in that. One thing I'd mention on this concept that's a little bit of interest that Mike talked about, the two labs that front Sixth Street currently are showing, ten townhomes. Those would be probably one of the last areas to develop. And we probably just have the market depending on what that could be. There's been a little bit of interest in some light commercial in that area. It could offer the apartments, it could be townhomes, it could be duplexes. There's some opportunity there that's unique to this site, and so we would probably start just resting that and just kind of let that, just see how things develop and go from there.
Overall, though, we think that this development can really add to what's already been established. Like we mentioned, the Crosby project that was done just south of here, as well as the work being done at Wayward Social. It's two amenities that have already proven the success of the neighborhood. And so we see it as being an additional opportunity for what we want to play off of. So Tim can touch on kind of the style and the vision of what ISG sees from these units. But really, kind of what I see is making sure that we blend into what's already there and not necessarily making something that sticks out too much.
So, the duplexes, this is a regular in the world, what those could potentially look like. As you can see, it's a pretty modern take on a duplex. The front end of that interior, those have been moved in the back, so they do capture that golf course mood, the golf course lifestyle, if you will. There's eight of those on the previous concept that all kind of run the north and west part of the golf course. So, as you see here, the larger units on the north and the west is in the bed space south there. Those units are approximately sixteen hundred square feet on the first floor, and they are two bed, two bath, and it probably doesn't finish in those units. They would be designed to, they could be an aging place type facility, so, you know, wheel, trash hards, walk-in showers, you know, again, and then the curb, all those types of things that you might see in a fifty-five and over type community, just a youth and aging place there. But it's something that, you know, we're seeing now in traditional buildings, so not something that would deter a danger, a danger to buy one either.
And that's something that as our older citizens are aging, they find themselves actually being more active as they have more time. And so being able to connect them to two amenities. A lot of the development projects we've seen similar to this around the state of Iowa have led towards that path where there's probably more fifty-five-plus, sixty-plus individuals that are looking to downsize to an extent while finding somewhere that they can really enjoy and have nice finishes, a cool and place to live for the rest of the time. And so what this ultimately provides is a HLA that would maintain all the grounds. And so that's a key in what we see as being a non-senior housing project. We do not want to make people feel like they are living in a nursing home, in a senior living. This is just a regular neighborhood. But there's those amenities to where all of your grass will be taken care of, your snow removed will be taken care of, all the raking, everything like that. And so that can really attract young professionals who are looking at longer work days, who may want to go spend their free time riding their bike, going to Wayward Social, enjoying what Marsh Town has to offer. And they don't want to be taking care of grass, they don't want to be scooping the snow. And so that's something that by providing this, you open up a wide range where, again, we're at a price point where maybe a townhome is somebody's second home, and they're able to go down south during the winter, knowing that their property is taken care of, all the snow is going to be removed, and that somebody's keeping an eye on it as well. And so there's some different opportunities there, and we think that can really enhance the type of living that this development can provide. And then the next style on the next page is going to be the townhome.
So these are two-story townhomes, there's a both two- and three-bedroom option, single car garage. And then, it's kind of hard to tell from this picture, but the garage actually acts as a deck, kind of separating the two uses, so. Again, we got four-star units, so it's some of the feedback that we've got from other similar-type developments, you know, throughout the Midwest. And so when people are going to own a property, they like some physical separation. Here, there's some common walls, but they're block walls. So this kind of gives you a personalized feeling that you own something, you know, that you're not sharing a common wall between the two buildings. So this is a townhome that we've seen in other developments that's been really successful. From our perspective, they're pretty complexed, but they have a lot of aesthetic value, so they're going to be relatively easy to construct, which allows us to get them on the market at a pretty reasonable cost. So a lot of bang for the buck if you want, and pretty modern, again, it's all that modern kind of style. And these started, we take it from a similar development that was done in Des Moines. And these, again, we're showing anywhere between twenty-two of these units on that site, so. If I would be happy to take any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Good presentation. Are there any questions or comments?
One thing I'll just pick up on here really quickly is just some initial kind of rough costs. We are around $450,000. In my memo, I specified that it appears that with the additional funds that we brought into the Edgewood Extension Project, we will not need as much of the capital designated local option sales tax as we had first heard. And we'll discuss it here as I think the next item in the CIP, or that's where it's shown that there's approximately $480,000 that would be available from there. So there's still details to come. This would ultimately, if you would like to proceed with it, come back before you as a development agreement when that would be basically ready to go. They still have some things to do on their end with setting up an LLC and ultimately moving forward with the closing on the property as well. So there's some additional steps, but we wanted to get this out in front of you tonight to see if this is something that you would like to move forward with.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Jessica, how would a special assessment for these thirty-eight houses, how would that work if we assessed the cost of the $450,000 back to the thirty-eight properties?
It depends on whether you would do that, what sort of schedule you would do that at, but it would probably be based upon the, I think, the frontage that they would have, I believe, is how it's been typically done in the past. I'd probably need to research it more with Justin, but basically you would just pass then as a council, I think needing six of seven of you to approve it, an assessment schedule that then we would file with the county, and they would have a bill to pay each year over a five-year period, ten-year period, whatever that would look like.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet.
Has anybody been able to count? Yes, go ahead.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Both are garden grounds maintenance. How is that set up? Is that on a separate basis or some other type of alignment?
So it's actually, it will be an HLA with a monthly fee. And what that monthly fee would go towards is all the expected costs throughout the year.
Good. Thank you.
The other thing that we forgot to mention, looking at some rough numbers of what these homes would end up appraising for, we see the city gaining about approximately $10 million of value through these properties, providing what we see as being potentially $150,000 to $200,000 in taxable value that would then go back to, go directly back to the city since we are not going through any type of tax rebates.
So you talked a little bit about down payment assistance. Is this something that's already been secured or that you plan on securing in the future?
I think the down payment assistance that he referenced was the program that the city or that the chamber has started to basically raise a million dollars to put $10,000 towards 100 homes, of which the city is participating with $250,000 towards that. So that is something that we've had some conversations with them about very early on in the founding of that program.
Thank you.
Where do we stand on that right now? I think the chamber has dedicated $250,000. The city's put in $250,000. Some of the banks and corporations have been making private contributions, and I know there's been an ask of the county to consider being in about the $250,000 range, too.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
So I guess just so what directions needed tonight from the council or otherwise? I mean, is it a gauge of the interest, in which case I would vocally agree that this is going toward the direction of which we talked about from an expansion of offerings within the community for young professionals, commuters, and otherwise. I think it's exciting to see this portion of the community be developed and expanded into what it's slowly becoming, and so I guess in my voice, if that's what the direction is, is I would be in support of at least what's currently being discussed at this moment in time.
Yeah. So what I would request, just so that we're very clear that there is not just a consensus, but that there are at least four of you who want us to spend time on this, knowing that it's not something that's going to come back to you next week. We would like, I would say I would like a motion to direct staff to move forward with putting together a development agreement. It wouldn't be with Rosemont, it would be with their LLC, but to work with Mike and Tim to bring back a development. it would be with their LLC, but to, to work with Mike and Tim, um, to bring back a development agreement for a partnership on the infrastructure.
And therefore I would move to make a motion as such, Your Honor.
Your Honor, I would second.
Thank you. There's an emotion and second. Do we, does anybody on the council wish to uh, have further discussion?
Yes, Your Honor, if I may.
You, you may.
Jessica, you're, you're suggesting we earmark those leftover funds from Edgewood. Um, what are the restrictions on using those funds? What other projects could we fund rather than building a private street for thirty-eight houses? Um, what else would fall in that, that scope of that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Well, I, I think that's really kind of a next conversation with the CIP, that there are multiple capital projects, um, that would fall under that previous designation, including I think storm water and wastewater as well as um, street projects. So, um, so they, yeah, I mean, we have a whole CIP that's full of projects, um, but ultimately we did not have anything fully designated for the remainder of the capital funds.
Yeah. Understand, I want thirty-eight more houses. I just don't want to have to build another street, because if, if all thirty-eight take advantage of the ten thousand dollar payout, if that comes to fruition, you know, we're going to have that expense no matter where the houses are at. But put that on top of the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, we're close to what? Almost half a million dollars investment for a dead end, for a cul-de-sac. So that, that's my only concern is, before we get into the CIP, are we in a position to, to proceed with dedicating a half million dollars to this project?
I, I would actually point out that if we would allow those properties to take advantage of the tax abatement, whether it's the three-year one-hundred percent, the five-year sliding, or ten-year sliding, we're actually putting more money into it um, with something that's there. So if we would have individuals who would want to take advantage of that ten thousand dollar incentive, the city actually saves money in that three-year one-hundred percent timeframe, um, from what we're putting in. Uh, the three-year one-hundred percent abatement, I believe, costs the city about four thousand dollars, whereas with the ten thousand, we're at twenty-five hundred, and, and so there's savings to us, um, plus the value is on the tax rolls right away. We, we could have talked about doing this as a, a TIF area to reimburse ourselves, um, but it just did not seem like the, the expense that we were talking about and the scope of the project that we were talking about was worth setting up an urban renewal area and then basically doing everything we need to do legally there, which would be probably about a ten thousand dollar cost to start. So uh, knowing that we had a funding source on hand that was not designated towards anything, this seemed to be the best option to bring forward. But there definitely still is that option on the table where we could set up the TIF and reimburse ourselves.
Well, the way we turn on investment is going to be people wanting a nice housing like this, paying taxes, uh, property taxes. That's, that's going to be where we get the money back.
Yeah. And that's the thing with the, with the TIF area too, is we, we would be seeing property taxes being paid, but um, nearly, probably like ninety percent would be diverted to repay the infrastructure costs versus going to the school district and the county as well.
The Crosby Park development was one of the, well, was one, is the nicest one, new multiple housing developments we've seen since we moved here thirty years ago. And I think you could go back another twenty years before that, and it got filled immediately. And so it's, it's exciting to see that neighborhood going like it is. And I'm one of those people who would like to be a snowbird someday. We do have a place down in Texas. Um, getting tired of having a big house that needs to be mowed and shoveled, and um, I'm seriously considering going home tonight for dinner and telling my wife, hey, we might have another place to live. But I, I shouldn't be talking, I should be asking further input from the council. Let's go ahead and unmute the mics for this one.
The lines are unmuted.
Thanks.
Uh, this is Joe Carter.
Hi, Joe.
If we're open for comment, and it's very hard to hear, but uh, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. This is uh, Joe Carter, uh, co-owner in Crosby Park, and I don't think Mr. Hayward could have said it any better with regard to uh, how hard it is in Marshalltown with the way appraised values come out to make this work. Uh, Mr. Thompson's uh, comment was uh, very appropriate, but uh, Ms. Kinzer's response was uh, even more appropriate. Uh, we want them to have as many homes, uh, that they can build there, and we want to pay that ten thousand dollars per home because the city will win, the county will win, everyone wins. You will pay yourself back every single day by not using tax abatement. But I understand, uh, we, we understood as we built Crosby Park, was a major uh, concern, could we get the rental rates we wanted to? Uh, with Rosemont and what they're trying to do, uh, in their two projects, specifically this one at Lynn Creek, uh, becomes uh, very concerning, and uh, they're going to have a hard time getting bank funding unless uh, we do some things to help them. But wouldn't it be exciting if we could be getting thirty to fifty homes built in Marshalltown in one uh, quick spot? Uh, and the more we do that, uh, the more uh, the Crosby Park excites or Wayward Social excites Rosemont companies to do things on Sixth Street, I would guarantee that that will continue if Rosemont builds on that property and does. What they're talking about will excite more developers, more builders who want to come to town, and then we all win. And that's exactly what we've been talking about from the chamber's viewpoint, is to get that twenty-two percent commuter rate cut in half over the next five years. And by doing that, we're going to see more tax revenue, we're going to see a, a wealthier population in town, and wouldn't it be nice if instead of being one of the most impoverished cities in the state, to go back to where we were in the sixties and seventies, to be one of the wealthiest uh, in the state? So I hope you guys take this uh, very seriously and consider it, and I hope that uh, Rosemont is very interested in continuing the process. So we're excited. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joe, for your comments, for serving on the uh, chamber and for your investment in the housing in this town. Let's uh, keep the mics open another ten seconds. Okay.
Joe, is, is Carter?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Joe, do we add?
Was anybody else able to hear that? I couldn't. Try again.
Joe, this is Bruce Johnson. I'm on the Trails Committee, and I really think this addition would be a, a huge positive for our trail system in Marshalltown, and the county and all the way, you know, from Lubbock all the way up to Eldora. So, you know, we'll get there someday, but this would be, would put a, a shot in the arm for that. So we're very much supported from the, the, the Trails, um, committee.
Thanks, because we could, we could hear that, sorry, I couldn't hear you at the start. Uh, and thanks for being on the Trails Committee. It's been a number of years now since I was on it, but I did drive up to Albion a few weeks ago to see what the park is going to look like up there. It is going to be phenomenal, really just phenomenal. All right. Let's uh, let's leave the, let's stay unmuted for another ten seconds.
The lines are going to remain unmuted for ten seconds.
Uh, this is Sherri Coatenhour. I have a question.
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead, Sherri.
I understand the need for the down payment. This is Sherri Coatenhour. For the ten thousand dollar down payment, are there going to be any restrictions as far as first home buyers? Or I would just make it in a situation where somebody lives in a house for three years and then goes to another house for three years and so on?
Um, so the, the chamber's program, uh, while the, the rules are not final and formalized at this point, is that it's for new homes. So it's more about um, a new property and new taxable value hitting um, the, the market, uh, versus someone jumping houses every few years. Um, somebody could actually probably build, uh, it's got to be owner occupied, so somebody would have to be able to be living in that house in order for it to qualify. But final rules are yet to come from the chamber.
Uh, this is Joe Carter, and I can address that as well. There's nothing to stop anybody via tax abatement from doing exactly the same thing. Uh, so Jessica is correct that it is for a new home. Uh, it has to be a brand-new home built, and so we win with that because then it creates more homes that are available on the market. Uh, and so you are right, Sherri, that a person could do exactly what you're saying, unless we wanted to restrict that. But I don't think there's necessarily a, a great desire to want to do that. Uh, they can, they can do that today under tax abatement. And as I said, if they take advantage of it and they buy the home, they're then taking the risk that they can sell it later. So currently that is not on our list of things to, uh, to stop. And, and I, I would like to further what Bruce Johnson said. It's the thing we talked about when we first started talking about Crosby Park with the city council. Uh, with the, and I don't want to lose this, but if we can get through Wayward Social, which Wayward Social is committed to building that trail through their property, to get the property built, oh, sorry, the bike trail built through, uh, what Rosemont Companies is talking about, and then on to the Legion Golf Course, to the right of way to the Sixth Street Bridge, if we can do that, uh, for the first time, we will have a uh, uh, eating and drinking establishments, both the Legion and Wayward Social, it would be on our trail, which we're best for listening to.
Thank you, Joe.
I think that's a wonderful program, and I, I, uh, the ten thousand dollars is going to be, really make it possible for new homes to be built. Um, in, in, in addition, um, if businesses would happen to offer relocation assistance to their employees, and um, I think that would even encourage people to move to town in addition to that ten thousand dollar down payment assistance.
I know you're not supposed to talk about your hometowns much, but my hometown of Spencer did that. They, they pulled together, got a ten thousand dollar incentive, and they were wildly successful getting new housing and, uh, new young professionals and young families in them. And, and so that developer did the first phase, did so well, did the second phase, did so well, did the third phase. So that's kind of what we're seeing around town right now. But let's keep the mic, the mics open, phones unmuted for another ten.
Live and in person, Terry Buzzvee, 406 New Salem Road, past Emerson Executive now, small business, and, and on the Housing Committee. Excuse me, I just, just emphasized a couple of points Joe made that, that'd be hard to make better. But when we think about our twenty-one percent of our, of, of our employment base commutes to Marshalltown greater than fifty miles, that's seventeen hundred jobs, right? Take that in half, that's eight hundred and fifty. We need eight hundred and fifty new build homes in this town. This is an incredible project that starts that momentum. We have others, but if we're going to get, if we really want to grow this town, in my opinion, housing is what's going to do it. Historically, we've probably averaged ten houses a year for the last thirty years, and then you wonder why we are what we are. And until we grow the housing capability of this town, continue to build on the amenities you have, we're not going to grow the town, we're not going to have the other new things that we'd all desire. So to me, as Joe said, the ability to attack that commuter rate, that is in fact why Rosemont is interested. They see Marshalltown as a town that has a very high commuter rate. They see a lot of these new amenities coming in. And so between the new housing build, and I'll go ahead and pile on to the trails, I think it's a phenomenal thing. We, we do have businesses like a Wayward. It's been difficult. It's been difficult the last year. It's difficult to start a new business up. But I really believe with trails, I would love to see people sitting in Marshalltown, looking around, and all of a sudden saying, where am I at? They're in Marshalltown, Iowa, looking at things, seeing things, and seeing develop in this city that, that hasn't been done in a long time. So I really believe this is an incredible project. I applaud, uh, the Rosemont team for taking it as far as they have. And I would certainly really like to see the council's support behind it. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Very good. I think we're at that point. If we haven't got a motion on the table, we should uh, solicit one.
We have one, don't we?
Yes, Your Honor, we have a motion on the table.
Okay, good. Let's take the vote.
Starks?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Doughty?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Eisen?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
I think that's a pretty good direction for staff. And now that that's passed, I have to say this is one of the most exciting things I've seen as mayor or been on the council for ten years. It really is. That's just phenomenal. Well, let's go on and talk about um, something, I shouldn't say less exciting, but actually involving less money. And that would be the municipal band levy.
Hi, this is Diana Steiner, Finance Director. Uh, full disclosure, I am a participant in the Marshalltown Municipal Band. Um, I do not take payments since I've become a city employee. So anyway, the city band levy, it's very simple. Whatever we levy, we pass on to the band. They use it for, um, their director and musicians' equipment and music. Um, so normally in the past, we've had eleven thousand dollars levied. So if we continue doing that, that is one point two cents. Um, the reason we're bringing this up this year is because last summer was the pandemic, and they did not have any concerts. So therefore they have a cash balance, and you are provided that in your packet. Um, I had originally budgeted, I originally just thrown in three thousand dollars. So that's point three percent, or point three cents. Um, so we, we don't have to decide the levy tonight, but uh, it is part of the general fund expenses that we need authority to spend. Um, Matt Harrick, uh, Harrick, the president of the band, is on the line. Um, so do you have any questions?
Any questions or comments?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Diana, um, so refresh everyone's memory again, where's the levy at today? What's the amount?
Well, okay, so it's a percentage of the valuation, so that's what I gave you for just the band. The overall levy we'll be discussing at the next council meeting. Most of that is driven by the, the debt service levy.
And right now?
Whether you're going to contribute local option sales tax to buy it down like you've done in the past.
But right now, we're not levying the maximum amount to the taxpayers on the band levy, are we?
No.
And a hundred percent strictly passed through, there's no administrative fees coming to us?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. Any other questions or comments? What sort of direction are the staff looking for on this one?
Um, so as the president had outlined in his memo, I mean, there's several ways you can go. You can decrease the levy, totally take it down to basically nothing this year, you know, and, and build it back up in future years. Um, or, you know, just tell me what you want to do. Because this, it's such a tiny change in the, in the levy amount that it, it doesn't make much difference.
And I can't think of anybody that would know better which of the three options we should do than somebody who's on the band and knows something about finances. What's your preference?
I mean, I think, I think the, the, um, the band just wants some kind of assurance that, you know, if it's three thousand dollars this year and three thousand dollars the next year, make sure you bring it back to eleven thousand once they spend their cash balance back down.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I'm just afraid if we lower it, three years from now, someone's going to forget why we lowered it, and they're going to be hesitant to bring it back up. I know a lot of certain and they're going to be hesitant to bring it back up. I know a lot of services still pay their employees, you know.
Okay, they don't pay their?
I know, but I'm just, I'm trying to use, tax, we use an example of another service that wasn't meeting all the needs of the customer base, but we were still paying the employees. I guess my feeling is, we leave the levy where it is, and we keep it that way, and just keep moving forward and leave it to the band's discretion to use this year windfall that they got. Because I'm sure, like any other organization, we underfunded them for years, and they could probably use a little more money.
Based on the number of concerts they have during the summertime, you know, they pay their musicians a flat fee for the rehearsal, and then also for the concert, and then they pay the director. Of course, there's music costs and instruments. So last year was just like, you know, you didn't spend $11,000 because you didn't have any concerts. So there is a gain there. So we could drop it, whatever amount, but you want to keep something in there just to remember that there was a levy there.
I guess I feel like we should leave it the same and move, just status quo on this one. Thanks, Your Honor.
You bet. Anybody else want to weigh in? We're getting, we're being hard to hear again, so I'll try to speak as closely as I can to the mic.
There's plenty of seats in the council chambers.
Yeah, we do have room here now, don't we? Anyone else, though, want to weigh in? Frankly, I like your idea, because if we have another year like last year, and it accumulates high enough, in a future year, the council will figure out, well, you know, they've got enough of a war chest going, we could skate for a while.
I move to proceed with Gary's suggestion.
Thank you.
To leave the levy at $11,000.
As is.
Yeah. Do you second that one, Gary?
Yes, I do, Your Honor.
Okay, I was guessing that. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Let's call the rule.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Doughty?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Eisen?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Starks?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Now let's go on to the third one, which is discussion of the for year '21 to '25 Capital Improvement Plan, second draft. I made the mistake of telling my wife I thought I'd be home by 7 o'clock tonight.
It's budget season, Your Honor.
Yep, it is.
I know that we are having some major audio difficulties for those online, so as long as you can hear me clearly, I'm going to have Diana sit at this microphone when we come into the other items, so that hopefully the audio will be a little bit better, because we do have a lot of content coming up that is very important. So I hope for our three council members online that you can hear what we're talking about, and things will work out okay here. So the Capital Improvement Plan, we talked about it at the last council meeting, and we had some things that were really unknown at that point. And so those things then clarified themselves here in the last few weeks, mostly that we got our valuations. I'm happy to report that, you know, those valuations really only impact Fund 030, and that we were able to be very close with our targets for revenue. So that worked out pretty well, so we didn't have any major things to change. One thing that you had asked for in the last meeting was what did we ask departments to reduce out of Fund 030 in order for us to make that fund balance? And I've listed those items in the attached memo. We also have a few changes that happened as well with the special events trailer, and then adding in the cost of a quote for some Microsoft licenses for our use of software and for our servers that are actuals now. So Fund 030 did change a little bit. Fund 110, the road use tax fund, which we will be talking about just a little bit later, that actually changed as well. We had some things that were kind of in the translation between Tyler, our financial software, and Planet, which do not communicate. We have to be the point of communication. There were things that were happening in the current fiscal year in terms of paying for things, which were approved in prior years, that were actually showing up. So we moved things into this current fiscal year to make things match up a little bit better with what you'll see in the report from the Tyler Financial Software System. So otherwise, besides those two funds, everything that you, we had last week, which included the detail report, which is basically information on every single project, and it's 300 and some pages, and so there's a lot that's there, or the source report, which is basically identifying the fund in which a project would be paid out of. That is basically the same except for Funds 030 and 110. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the Capital Improvement Plan.
There is a God. Nobody had any questions. I'm getting hungry.
So basically, this one will come back on February 22nd. You'll have a resolution to set a public hearing on it, with the public hearing to occur at the March 22nd meeting with the adoption of the Capital Improvement Plan at that time.
Ready for the next topic?
Let's go. You bet. And I did get worried again that that microphone is better than the rest, but it's not very good.
Okay, Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So first, we want to talk about the valuations. Oh, Jessica, I need my packets.
Oh, that's the truth. I'm sorry. Do you want this right here, or do you want me to just pull stuff up on?
If you could pull it up, that'd be great. So we talk about property tax valuations. So if you go to the first handout, it shows a history from fiscal year 18 through projected FY '22, our tax valuations. So residential went up by 15 million. Commercial property actually went down by 114,000. Industrial went up 3.9 million. Multirresidential went up 1.8 million. And gas and electric utilities went down 9 million. So I called the state to see why the gas and electric went down. They told me that there was a correction for Alliant. They overstated their acquisition costs in prior years, so that's why that went down. So as you know, the difference between taxable valuation and assessed value is the rollback. And on the right there is the percentages of the rollback depending on what category it is. So residential went up slightly, .3, 1.33%. Multirresidential continues to go down 3.75% every year, and will continue to go down until it hits the residential rate. Commercial and industrial stay the same. So commercial, industrial, the legislature is supposed to appropriate the 10% difference. Their pool of money keeps getting smaller, so therefore, our money that we get gets smaller as well. So any questions on this handout? If not, we'll go to the next handout. So when we're trying to figure our general fund budget, we have to look at the valuations. And then we use the 810 regular general levy and the 27 cent emergency levy for our revenue sources. So for fiscal year '22, our regular was $908 million. So that increased from last year of 4.3 million, but it's only a .48%. You can see in prior years, it's been between 1.8 and 5.3%. So in dollars, this is what hurts us. It's only a $36,000 increase. And you can see in prior, last year was 221,000, the year before that was 370,000. So it was very disappointing to get our valuations this year. And so when we go on to our next topic, which is going to be the general fund budget, we are going to talk about why we have a deficit. So first of all, I wanted to say that the directors went in and made their adjustments, and then the city administrator and myself met with each director to look over their budgets. So we're actually doing two budgets. We're doing the fiscal year '21 reestimated budget, which is this current fiscal year. And then we're also doing the FY '22 budget that will start in July. So basically, we had a status quo programming, except for the YSS contract with the police department, which you approved at $75,000 for this year and next year. Of course, there's always inflation. A lot of the maintenance agreements automatically have an escalation clause in them. And there's wage increases. So wage increases were already negotiated for the union contracts. So we put in a 2.5% increase for non-union people. That's been our past practice to do that. Health insurance, we budgeted an increase of 7.5%, of which the employer would pay 85% of that increase. There's a lot of items here that are listed, so I'm not going to read them all, but I will touch on a few. Item number six, road use taxes transferred to the general fund to cover gross wages of the Public Works Department. Number seven, the levy and related expense for the Fisher Community Center continues to be budgeted at $100,000. We just discussed that a few meetings ago. Item 10, the backfin from the state is budgeted at 75% to be conservative. Again, that's a rulebook I talked to you about on the valuation sheets. Number 13, the general liability and property insurance are estimated with a 10% increase for this fiscal year and additional 5% increase for FY '22. Because of the dry chair, the ICAP pool is going to take a big hit, so we don't actually know what our premium is going to be until March. But that's what we're estimating right now. Hotel motel tax is kind of tricky, because they only pay quarterly, and they're, you know, a quarter behind when they do pay us. With the pandemic, we don't know if companies are going to continue to travel less. Now that everybody's gotten kind of used to go to meetings, there may not be as many conventions potentially in town anymore, stuff like that. So that's a hard number to budget. Currently, we're budgeting $400,000, and we turn around and give 67% of that to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. That number could be changed as well. For most of our other general fund revenues, we are taking it back to pre-COVID levels. Whether that's realistic or not, we don't know. I did want to mention that in fiscal year '21, we did receive some CARES Act dollars from the federal government that passed through the state. And I wanted to mention that we did not budget anything for McTV. Last year, at this time, we had the same discussion, and council decided to use the local option sales tax to pay for that. I think at the next meeting, McTV will be making a presentation as well to continue funding. So overall, our deficit for fiscal year '22 is $137,000. So on the next page, you can see some options that we've put together. Can you change that? So at the top of the page, $137,000 deficit. We kind of subtracted off the $75,000, because that's the YSS contract with the police department that you already approved. So we thought we could at least use the fund balance for that CARES Act money carrying forward. So that leaves us at a $62,000 deficit. So an option would be to reduce the agreement with the chamber for tourism and marketing. So again, if you went from paying them 67%, which is $268,000 to 50%, that would save $38,000 a year, or something in between, if you wanted a different percentage. Like I said, we could reduce the non-bargaining wage increase. It's currently at 2.5% budgeted. For every 0.5%, you'd save about $28,000. You could just transfer local option sales tax, council designated, to buy down the deficit. You've done that before as well. Normally, we budget that to put us in balance, and then what actually happens is, we didn't need it, so then we don't transfer it. You could use the fund balance, again, for projecting a carryforward surplus in FY '21 of around $400,000. So you could just use that. Option five is to reduce some or all of the line items below. So each department went back through and said, well, if we had to cut, what would we do? And these are the items that they came up with. If you go to the next page, it does show you our fund balance. So at June 30th of 2020, we rolled in with a $2.1 million fund balance. We're looking at a surplus of $428,000 this year, primarily due to the CARES Act. That leaves the fund balance at the end of this fiscal year of 2.5. For FY '22, we're looking at a deficit of $137,000. So that would leave our ending fund balance at June 30th at 2.4. So we need your direction of how to remove this deficit, or whether to reduce costs or to transfer in money. So we need to have that discussion.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
So I guess my question with the $400,000 surplus from the CARES, all that's unallocated at this point in time?
Correct.
And I guess, why would we, I guess, not knowing if the options are listed in order of preference, why would we not go with option four out of the options listed? Why would we keep an additional surplus in the fund that we're talking about?
Well?
Eliminating a deficit?
The advantage is that it looks to the public like you're in balance, because revenues will equal expenses. Where if you're using the fund balance, it's going to look on paper like you're in a deficit, you're budgeting a deficit.
And I think the other thing to sort of expand on that is that this is not likely the last year that we'll have a deficit. It's not the first year that we've had a deficit and had to come to all of you for something. And so that's kind of a later on where we've done some projections of what that structural deficit looks like. And so the CARES Act dollars, as well as then the other revenue that came in way over what we had expected, was our building permits. I think we've budgeted $375,000, whereas we started out the, you know, last year at this time saying $160,000. So significantly more in building permit revenue this year than we thought. So it's, we're looking at the budget that we believe that we can target. We just see some of those one-time revenues as not being something that's going to be there for the long term. So it is certainly, option four is definitely the way to buy time, to give us the chance to talk about more options and ways to hopefully bring the general fund back into a a long-term type of balance situation where we don't have to have this conversation every year. But at least for where we're at right now, it's one of multiple options that you really could look at.
So I guess to that point, though, if I look at all five options, I mean, the only one, in my opinion, that really aligns with the long-term future projections of the, I mean, what the deficit can look like, would be option one. I mean, I think continuing to reduce wage increases year over year isn't sustainable. I would argue that the best use of funds for council designated loss isn't to cover a deficit. I would argue that nitpicking line items from the departments doesn't make sense to me. And obviously, there's only so much of a surplus with regards to what the general fund currently has, so that's not sustainable. So, I mean, obviously, a bigger So, I mean, obviously, a bigger question to address is the projection that was put in front in one of the other attachments. I guess I don't know how we, at least in the near term, I guess option four seems like the most realistic, in my opinion. I don't know that I agree with some of the other options, but others weigh in there. So I guess my only point is, none of these options seem like a long-term fix to what looks to be a possible problem moving forward.
The options are not in any particular order. We just listed them.
We got that. Your honor, if I may. I hear what Councilman Isom is saying, and these are some tough decisions. I think the department heads have done a wonderful job. I don't like nitpicking them even further with this nickel-and-dime stuff. I guess my feeling is, option one, that's $268,000 a year, is that correct? 67% of the $400,000?
Yes.
Okay. Since I was a member of the chamber as a business owner, I've seen the chamber turn to a lobbyist group. And should we be really seriously using taxpayers' money to fund a group that's a lobbyist? And we could hire anyone to do convention and business tourism marketing for us. So I think the quick fix is, is we just stop funding the chamber at a rate of $268,000 a year. That solves the deficit and gives us a little breathing room, and then plus leaves us that cushion that we can carry on that $400,000 to future years, because we don't know what's going to happen after this. So I guess I would be in favor of shutting off the tourism and marketing money and then maybe putting something out to bid for anyone to come back and bid on that at a greatly reduced rate.
So that is one distinction to really make clear here, is that Iowa code does require us to use 50% of those funds for convention and tourism. So it would not be the general fund being able to reclaim that entire amount, that there would be approximately $200,000?
Well, that leaves $234,000 then.
Yeah, so there would need to be at least 50% of that budget, that funding, that would need to go to support the state mandated requirements, basically.
Once again, we're looking at more than enough to override the deficit.
You're correct, and that's why it's there as an option.
Thank you, your honor.
You bet. Thank you. I suppose there are ways to do a combination of these things, too. Doesn't have to be just one option. Anybody else want to weigh in?
I guess my only comment, your honor, would be back to Gary is, I don't disagree, and I know it's been a topic of conversation over, at least since I've been on the council, with regards to what that percentage is from the hotel motel tax. I agree that there should be an evaluation of what that looks like in decreasing year over year. I think one foul swoop, I guess I won't understand what that looks like from an impact of what we already have committed and otherwise communicated to the chamber with regards to what they're providing today. I don't disagree with the top of the conversation, but I think immediately dropping that would require some additional insight for awareness.
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
If we dropped it to the 50%, so we took 17% away.
You'd save $68,000.
Which would be, your 62, 193 would cover that.
Right.
So they would lose...
$68,000.
Yeah, $68,000. We'd take $68,000 away from them, which is probably that whole department, right? They have one person?
They receive $268,000, is what we'd send them now.
Right.
So yes, they do employ one person, and then there are grants and things that they provide out as well. I think we would need to invite the chamber here to give you a better idea of what that money is used for, because I don't think we could speak to it at this point.
And I'm okay with that, but the problem I have with that is money going into one account, you know, it gets muddied. I'd like to know what the chamber's spending, since they're receiving our funding. I'd like to know how much they're paying the national, you know, Chamber of Commerce, how much, you know, that, when they do do tourism information and print, you know, travel guides and things. I don't think they're using local printers here in Marshalltown. I mean, we're using taxpayers' money. Again, it's hotel motel tax, people coming to Marsh Town, but we sure seem to be sending a lot of taxpayers' money back out the door to other organizations. I just don't see anything else on here. You know, I agree with Mr. Isom that, you know, if we transfer lost funds, I mean, we're just, we're putting a Band-Aid on it. And I agree, you know, the cost of living wages can't be reduced. I just see that as the only viable option in owning up to the taxpayers of what we're using their money for.
Would you all like us to see if the chamber can come on February 1st to the next budget meeting and let you know more about the contract that we're operating under and how they've used the funds?
I think it addresses some of the conversation tonight, so I think that would be appropriate. The only other question and clarification I had with regards to that $268,000, or what the 67% equates out to now, that is less than what they would be receiving in a normal operating year. Is that a fair statement? Obviously, since that revenue generated off hotel motel taxes down significantly. Or what does that, I guess, equate to or look like? I'm just, are we talking at a years-to-year apples-to-apples comparison with regards to what those dollars typically are versus what it is today?
For fiscal year 21, we received $488,000, so it's 67% of more of that, of $88,000.
And then a normal year?
But I mean, it continues to go up. It had been going up every year till the COVID hit. So they always got the benefit of that 67% increase.
And your honor, if I may, I honestly think they had a couple of windfall years with, you know, the tornado. I think most of the hotels were booked up. You know, I think they were the big recipient of that, besides the hotel owners, obviously.
Right.
But that's the kind of information we need to see, though. We need to see where their money, you know, we are funding them, like anything else that we fund, just like plowing the snow next door now. You know, we're funding organizations outside of the taxpayers' expectation, I guess. That's what I want to see, is, I need to see accountability for all these organizations that we're using taxpayers' money for.
So we do have accountability, and I'll email this out to all of you. We do have an annual agreement for this, which specifies certain things, reporting and stuff like that. So there is accountability that we are building into those agreements and things. So yeah, I'll email you out or have Alicia email out to you the current agreement that we're operating under, so you have a better idea of what services they are providing to us in exchange for this very specific revenue stream. We also have an agreement with the Chamber for Economic Development Services, which comes from a wholly different revenue stream, under a wholly different agreement as well. And then we do pay $500 a year in dues, I believe, as well, that goes into their general fund as well.
To answer your question, does anybody have an objection to inviting the chamber here for the next meeting? Let's do it.
And I just want to clarify, your honor, if I may. I'm not saying that's the answer. I'm just saying of the five that the staff has brought to us, it's the least objectionable, to me. So I'm not saying that's the direction we'll go if they come and present. I just would like to hear. Is that acceptable, your honor?
I feel like any time that any of you have questions about the contracts that we have in place and the funding that we are providing to other organizations under those contracts, then certainly they should be able to come here and to tell you more about what's going on. One of the things with COVID that we haven't done, really in the last year, is have that report item on the agenda. And so that's probably where you've missed out on a number of reports from organizations, because that would be that time period when we would typically have them here to let you know more about what they've done in a past quarter and things like that. So yeah, we can certainly do that. The February 1st meeting is a special meeting, and so they'll be able to present to you in kind of a different, a little bit more relaxed way, because we won't have the formal agenda process.
So at the next meeting, we'll be bringing the local option sales tax. So like I said, there is nothing budgeted right now for McTV in this general fund budget. So if that's going to be a transfer from local option sales tax, and we're just not going to spend that money anymore, I need to know that as well.
And so the McTV, Jackie Goodman with Iowa Valley Community College District has reached out and said that they would like to bring forward a funding proposal. And so I have requested that they come to the February 1st meeting as well, which is when we will be talking about local option sales taxes. As you can see, there's really not additional money in the general fund to kind of go around for that.
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
Are there other organizations that should come to that same meeting, since we're discussing budget and outside organizations?
We have not put out a call for funding to outside organizations.
No, no, I mean existing ones, like McTV and the chamber.
There are no other organizations?
I don't mean impact. I mean, that's brand new.
Right, there's no other contractual organizations that, or contractual relationships where we have something that expires basically as of June 30th that I can think of at this point in time.
Thank you. Thank you, your honor.
You bet.
And so are you wanting to leave on paper, if we get rid of the $62,000 through whatever sources, are you wanting to still show that there's a deficit of $75,000? Because remember, for that YSS contract, we were going to, we could use the fund balance carryforward. Or do you want to transfer money in from some other source?
Can we wait till after that meeting?
Sure.
Yeah, and I'll just say, it's from our side of things that we're recommending that you look at this as a deficit of $62,193. It was the CARES Act funds that really, I think, motivated you all to fund 100% of that first year, knowing a calendar year has two fiscal years. And so that's really where we're encouraging you to look at this as a deficit of $62,193.
Do you need a motion, your honor?
I do.
To go... You need a motion to go that direction that we talked about?
I don't think we need a motion at this point in time, unless somebody wants to make a motion for a specific option to reduce the general fund deficit at this point. But it doesn't sound like we're at that point.
I suppose we could leave it as a consensus that we'll hear from the chamber and revisit this. This is just a discussion item tonight.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody wants to make a motion that there's something on there or a combination, certainly do so. But if you're asking for more information for the chamber, it would be my opinion that it's premature to say that's the option to go with.
Okay.
Okay, the next report is the budget comparison report, so I just wanted to make a few comments on that. So this is the report that comes out of our accounting system, and you will see it over and over during this budget cycle. So the first column of numbers is what we ended with in fiscal year 20, which was at June 30th, 2020. The next column is our total adopted budget, which you committed to last March. And the next column is what we've earned or spent through December, so six months. The next budget is our re-estimated budget, or what we were going to put through for our budget amendment. And then the next column is our FY 22 budget request. So if you recall, earlier in the spring, the CARES Act came along because of the pandemic, and the federal government sent the state of Iowa some money to help local governments. So Iowa allocated $125 million. $100 million of that was supposed to go to cities and counties, and then $25 million was supposed to go to the local match for FEMA. So on the report here, you can see where I marked FY 21 CARES grant. So for the police department, we put $368,000, so that was this year. We're not going to get it next year, or we have no idea whether we will get anything like that under the new Congress or not. So that's on that page. I'm just going to hit some highlights here. On the next page... Can you pull down the next page, Jessica?
One second here.
Okay.
There's, I'm still getting comments that you're, there's some static interference, so if you can maybe keep your mask from hitting the microphone?
Okay. How's that? On page two, under account number 00110105230, consulting and professional fees, that's where that $75,000 is for YSS. And it has another $4,200 just for other consulting. On page three, under 00110105718, minor equipment, that's for those $200,000 of police radios that you had approved. So again, one time in FY 21, nothing for FY 22. On the next page, four, you see the fire department getting their CARES grant. I'm going to skip. Just trying to point out some items that are not, that are different from FY 21 to FY 22. So if you go to page 10 of 37, under function 2010, you'll see that the adopted budget, the second column, is quite a bit higher than the fourth column, which is our amended budget. That's because of all the costs that got incurred with the derecho. So we're putting those expenses in a different fund, so we reduce the amount of budget in this one. So when you're doing a comparison between fiscal year 21 amended and FY 22, it's not as big of an adjustment as you think, because we reduced this year's budget. On page 15, under the airport, they also received $30,000 in the CARES grant. And under the farm rent, fiscal year 21 amended, contains two months of payments. I meant not two months, two years of payments. So just timing-wise, we got two years in FY 21, one year in FY 22. On page 17 is the library. It does not contain the revenue for the levy. That sits in function 6021, the finance budget. So to look at their total operations, you'd have to add in another $245,000 in their revenue to see what their actual operations are. So basically, it costs... Their net expense is $1 million. On page 19, under function 4020, is the band. Again, that's where we just talked about. We have $11,000 this year, and I will change it to $11,000 next year, rather than the $3,000. Whatever we levy goes right back out to them. On page 25, at the top of the page, function 4060, that's the $100,000 that we give to the Fisher Community Center. Again, we levy for that and pass it through. Again, we levy for that and pass it through. On page 30, under the finance function, this is where all the property tax levies go. And under 00160214011, delinquent property taxes, as you recall, the property taxes, the governor ordered that they could be deferred because of the pandemic. So in the past, our delinquent property taxes are only about 2,000 dollars, but we got 100,000 dollars in this year for, they should have posted last year, but got deferred. So we're not counting on that for next year, of course.
Or ever, right?
Yeah. Uh, let's see, what else? On page 31, under 00160214110, utility excise tax. Again, our valuations went down for gas and electric, so our revenues went down. And the backfill is on line 00160214339. So that's the rollback that I talked about earlier. You can see our amended budget is 225,000 for this year, and we're budgeting 206 for next year. On page 35 of 37, the cable TV, again, nothing budgeted for FY '22. And on page 36, I'm going to talk about the transfers out. So there are certain instances where the revenue generated has to go into a special revenue fund, and then can be transferred from there. So road use tax is one example. So we get road use tax from, tax at the gas pumps and the vehicle registrations. The money comes in there, we pay for projects, and then reimburse the general fund for the public works department. So that's what that transfer is for road use tax. The next one is employee benefit fund. So again, we levy the property tax, it goes into the special revenue employee benefit fund, and then whatever we actually spend over in the general fund, we transfer the money back to the general fund. Same for the police retirement on the next line. Transfer from emergency, that's our 27 cent emergency tax levy. So whatever we collect in that fund, we transfer back to the general fund. Uh, the transfer from TIF, so that's the facade and code grants. It gets paid out of the general fund, and then we transfer the money from TIF to the general fund. And then the expenses for the transfers out, we have some money going to the dangerous and dilapidated fund, and then also for transit. So transit comes in to the general fund, and then we send it back out, whatever we collect. And they also received CARES grant money, so that is why we're going to levy less this year for FY '22. Any questions on this document?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Remind me, when will we know on the backfill amount? When, when was that last year? When did they finally?
It's whenever the legislature appropriates it. So they went to what, March, I think they got out of session early last year, so March or April before it was decided.
They were back in June, so I don't think it was official until they.
Yeah, I thought it was late last year. Okay. Thank you, thank you.
So that's why we're trying to be conservative with the backfill, we budgeted 75% of what we are actually owed.
And there is no more CARES Act money that we are expecting?
Right.
None whatsoever?
Nothing that Congress has passed at this point in time.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to the next handout is the employee benefit fund, the police and fire retirement fund, and the emergency fund. So as you can see in my memo, the employee benefit fund covers FICA, IPRs, health insurance, workers' comp, unemployment, retired health savings account for staff. So again, we levy this money, it comes into the special revenue fund 112, and then we transfer it to the general fund for what we actually need. We did budget a seven and a half percent health insurance increase for FY '22. Of that, the employee will pick up 15%, and the city will pick up 85%. For fund 117, this is the police and fire retirement account. Their rates continue to go up statewide. It's going from 25.31% to 26.18%. And then the emergency fund is the straight 27 cents levy that we collect in fund 119 and move to the general fund. So on the second page, you can see what our projected cash balances are in those accounts. Now, they do look quite big for the employee benefits fund, but again, we don't know for sure what our premiums are going to be, and we are self-insured. So if we need more money, we got to get it some, from someplace. So we have a little fund balance there.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Can we ask Mike and Dave to put a moratorium on retirement? Take that as a no?
Uh, it's an immutable force, from what I understand.
Any questions on that before we go on to the next one? Okay, here we go. The next one is the road use tax. So again, this is money we get from the gas tax at the pump and the vehicle registrations. It's based on census, allocated on census. So we did drop the revenue, because potentially our census could be going down in Marshalltown. Since they haven't actually tallied it yet, we don't know whether it will go into effect July 1st or thereafter, so just trying to be conservative. Um, again, the road use tax pays for salaries of public works and all the projects that you saw on the CIP and the equipment. And on the second page is the fund balance. So you can see we're starting out at June 30th of 20 at 5.9 million dollars in spending down, so we're projecting an ending balance of 2 million. Between the tornado and the Dratcho, we've had to defer a lot of projects, and now we're catching up. Any questions on this one? Okay, the next one, discussion of maximum property tax levy dollars. So last year this time, I brought this to you, it was new legislation. So it's basically for public information, so they want, not only if there's a rate change in your tax levy, but they want the public to see what dollars are changing. So if you go to the actual form, that first column of numbers is what we levied on these particular levies in, for fiscal year '21, based on the taxable valuation of 904 million dollars. You go to the second column, the only thing that changed is the taxable valuation, so it's the same as what we know for FY '22. So 908 million dollars in valuations. So if you scroll down in the last number there, you can see that, based on the, based on the higher valuations, but the same amounts of expenses, that the rate would have gone down from 13.35 to 13.29. And then the last column of numbers is our valuations for FY '22 and what we're going to be requesting. So again, we always ask for the maximum regular general levy of 8.10. So in dollars, that goes up 35,000. Publicly owned transit, again, we're going to decrease that because of the CARES grant money that will be carried forward. So that decreases a total of 225,000. Um, the next line is for this Fisher Community Center, no changes. Property and liability insurance, again, we are increasing that because of the Dratcho, so that is going to go up 42,000. Our local emergency management commission, we got a bill from them, or a projection for them, that's going up as well, about 1,200 dollars. The emergency money, that's just the flat 27 cents per thousand. Uh, the police and fire retirement, again, those rates went up, so we're increasing that. FICA, IPRs, going down slightly. The rates didn't change, but we have had turnover, so as people that are on top of the pay scale leave, and people that coming in at the bottom of the pay scale come, you do have a small savings there. And then our other employee benefits are increasing because of the health insurance. So this is a public document, it will need to be published, there will need to be a hearing on it. So do you have any questions? Again, this is not the final tax levy, because it doesn't include the debt service levy and the CIP levy and the voted, the voted levies, which is the library and the band. Okay? Now I guess we're going to the next topic. So I've given you a lot of information tonight, I kind of wanted to give you a little reality check if our, if our valuations continue on. So the, the chart in the table show what happens if we only ha, continue to have a 0.5% growth, which again, we haven't had a growth this low in many, many years. But if it does continue, what's going to happen? So I, I figured a 0.5% growth in property taxes, and then our expenses are basically just the cost, the cost of living adjustments for wages. So that's the only thing that's changing, you can see that our deficit increases quickly. So that's why we're a little concerned about using, like, local option sales tax or anything like that for a permanent, a permanent funding of the deficits. So there's really nothing that you need to act on tonight, we just wanted to bring this to your attention, to give you some, some kind of numbers that you could work with in the future. Like I said, for our general fund, FY '21, we're sitting okay, because we're going to have a carry forward. FY '22, we do have a deficit, but the deficits probably aren't going to go away. So any questions on this?
Your Honor?
Yes.
So I guess with the deficit discussion and everything else, I guess the one thing I, I'm assuming we don't take into consideration is any of this accelerated growth from a housing perspective and property tax revenue generated off of those properties into the future?
Well, I think you just really hit on, you know, that there's things that we need to think about of, you can cut your way out of things, you can grow your way out of things, and then there's a lot of stuff in between. And certainly, I think that growing is, is something that we need to do. I think one of the things that we've been very cognizant of is that residential rollback is something that does seem to have quite a bit of variability, and if it stays at 55% or below, that's really hurting us. It went up a little bit this year, but, you know, not enough to make up for losses in some other classes. And so with our multifamily class looking to basically get to that level in fiscal year 2024 as well, we're, we're looking at some changes coming up and, and what those valuations really do look like. But adding more valuation certainly starts to change your, your projections here.
I just, I just want to make sure we're not painting a doom and gloom picture when at the end of the day, when you have some of the developments that are already existing, and some of the conversations that are existing, and are active in discussion, that changes the landscape of where we're at in six years quite drastically, that I, if you just look at this table alone, I think it paints an inappropriate picture to where we're actually at. Uh, I get that all those things aren't there, not everything's built and everything else, but to sit there and, and use this as the only staple of the conversation for the public's knowledge and everything else, doesn't take into account all the other stuff that's in progress, working, and that we're continuing to, to try to drive from the growth of Marshalltown and the community. I mean, that, that directly has a very, very large impact on that conversation. So I just, I want to make sure that we keep that abreast of this conversation in parallel, because it, it is the same conversation.
Yeah, and you know, that's the, the great thing about these being projections, is, you know, we can, because I, I've put together some spreadsheets kind of for that development, just to see what a TIF repayment would look like. And so I've got things already figured out with, like, what would likely assess, or what would likely assessed and taxable values equate to. So that's where we can start to mess with that residential piece, and see what the residential piece does on that blue line of how much valuation do you need to have to get to, you know, 2% growth each year in, in your valuations? Because it is really, I mean, residential is our, is our biggest class. And so I think that's the thing that we have to look at, is we have a need, we have, that's, that's definitely one thing that's going to help us sort of get to the point where that blue line starts to move. And so that's certainly why we're, we're having the conversations that we're having with developers when they come, come around and start talking about single family as well, is that we need that valuation to keep moving things forward. So I completely agree. This is 100% based on assumptions, knowing that we saw a really bad growth year this year. And so how do we make sure that we don't see that again? And what does that look like? And you're, you're 100% correct, Councilmember Isom, that changing, changing the value that you have is, and adding more is one of those ways to make sure that we don't have a deficit.
I agree, and the only thing I had, and then I'll be quiet, is I, the conversation's multifaceted, I just want to make sure we're, we're all aware of that, because this, this paints the picture that if we don't and aren't willing to grow, we will surely shrink. So.
In the big picture of things, in the big picture of things, we're, we're doing remarkably well, being hit with the two weather events, and still able to repair our infrastructures, add to our infrastructures. And so if we have to run a deficit, well, we can explain that pretty well. And so the idea is dig out of this, build a new, stop the commuting, get more housing, get more taxes. But that's got to be the message to the rest of the town.
Your Honor? Oh, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Briefly, where is this 0.5% figure coming from? Is this from the last year, or is this from the last five years? And if not, what is the figure over, you know, the average over the last five years?
It comes back to the valuation sheet. When I said we only increased by 0.48%, I just rounded it to 0.5.
And so I think it was the prior year where there was actually a negative growth, the, before the fiscal year '17. There was, there was one of those years that is, that was prior year that was negative, where it was basically like a boom, we've got to reset again. And so there has been some really great years of, of growth and valuations, you know, since then. I think this year came to, it came to us as a fairly big surprise, and Diana kind of walked through, you know, that it, we weren't expecting to lose commercial valuation, because, you know, the, the values as of January 1, 2020, the tornado damage was taken into account on January 1 of 2019. So we, we thought that that had made its way through the system, and we hadn't seen anything. So that's where really, you know, it was a, a big surprise in, in determining why things did change so much, and the utility valuations were another piece of that as well.
And the FY '22 valuations aren't accounting for any impact from the Dratcho. So could be having another big discussion next year.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I want to comment on, on something Councilman Isom said. I, I think this is serious, the red and blue lines, and I think there's some things we could do immediately to mitigate some of that. I mean, I think we're all under the understanding that when the census numbers come out, we're going to lose some population. So some of this new housing is just going to get us back to ground zero. You know, then we got to play catch up from there. So I think we need to have some serious conversations. So I think we need to have some serious conversations about, if we go all in on this ten-thousand-dollar, you know, new home thing, I think we need to have conversations about eliminating the three-year tax abatement. We need tax revenue today, you know, not four years down the road. You know, because I think, you know, we're looking at borrowing, where's that at? We're looking at borrowing possibly another six million dollars on top of what we borrowed last year, and that's six million, wasn't it? You know, I mean-
Nine and a half, I think.
Oh, yeah, the big one, yeah, that's right. So I mean, I don't want to paint doom either, but I think we need to have some serious conversations about some small steps we can take to, to change the way we reward people, you know? And I like the idea of the ten thousand, I love it, you know, but I want that tax revenue today. You know, it's already, it's already going to be, it's a year, it's a year behind anyway. So, and I think that can at least get that blue line moving up a little bit. Not, it won't close the gap, but I think it'll parallel it at least with, with your, with your comment of all the new houses being built.
There, you know, there's actually even something simpler that we really have not talked about as a council for probably four years, and that is the franchise fee on gas and electric utilities that you can ultimately charge up to five percent. What ends up happening is then you don't pay, as an individual or business, you don't pay local option sales tax on that utility cost. So there's a little bit of a swap. And then there's very specific things that it can be used for as well that you would have to approve. But that, that would be something if we want to discuss further, would be something that would change that blue line significantly for the general fund, and could also help the tax levy by dedicating more funds to offsetting property tax increases as well. So there's, there's untapped revenues out there as well that we can look at in addition to valuation growth as well.
I'm done.
Thank you. Should we go on to, boy, it seems like my mic is off. Last discussion item, general fund revenues and five-year projection?
That was what we just did, Your Honor.
I thought we were still back on the one right above that. Okay, good. The Cyclone game started about three minutes ago. Time for public comment. Members of the public may make comments on any item not on the agenda during this, during this time, the speaker shall approach the microphone, state name and address. Limit comments to three minutes unless I authorize more. Direct comments to the mayor and council as a whole. The mayor and councilors shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public, and no action may be taken on those in order to comply with the open meetings laws. The microphone is open and the lines are unmuted.
Hi, this is Sarah Wesenblum, Library Director. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I just want to let the community know that the library is planning to move back to the walkthrough phase next Monday, February first. If everything goes okay, we will resume the hours that we had, the walkthrough hours, which is Monday through Friday, noon to six. We will be doing curbside also in the mornings through the end of the day. We will be adding Thursday morning from ten to six. We had a request from families to have more time for parents with napping schedules. So we hope that will work out, and we look forward to hopefully expanding our services. We just want to take it incrementally. We feel like we've done a very good job with managing COVID and the staff. And so I appreciate the community's response and all the outreach. We've gotten a lot of lovely notes and letters from people during this time, and I do appreciate the community's patience with us. The other question that keeps coming up is about income taxes. For those who aren't aware, AARP helps generally over three-hundred community members a year with their taxes. They are still discussing with the National AARP about bringing their volunteers back in. I know we've been getting lots of calls. Please feel free to give us a call next week. But the AARP volunteers are still negotiating with the National Headquarters about can they provide this service during this time. So thank you, everybody, for your support of the library.
Thank you, sir. Keep up the good work there. Anyone else? Let's go for ten.
I have a comment, Your Honor.
You bet, go for it.
I just wanted to point out, I think, some efficiencies in the meeting tonight that, while I understand twenty-twenty-one and technology gives us the opportunity to host virtual meetings in the climate that we're in today, only one seat was allocated from a public member at tonight's meeting. So while I think it's appreciated from the council, those that are able to join virtually and otherwise, I still highly encourage those that are able to join in council to participate in such a manner as it's more effective, better use of time. And I, that's the only comment I want to address because I think focusing on communication, that technology we have also has issues, and a more effective manner of our meetings is a better use of all of our time.
There is no question, we've had less public input when we had to go virtual for the COVID than when people could be here in person. That's a good point. Anyone else? If not, we are adjourned at eight oh seven PM. Go Cyclones.